Our meeting for the evening, and let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This should be a very short meeting this evening. We have an agenda that's not too complicated. We have no presentations, we have no appointments, and we have one set of minutes, January the 9th, 2017.
So move, Mr. Chairman?
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Ficassi, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approve the minutes of January 19th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Next item of business on our agenda is a summary of actions taken at the committee of the whole meetings, which we have none this evening, and we have four consent agenda items. The first one, Consent Agenda Item A, is authorization to release a letter of intent and draft of the Northland Subarea Master Plan Amendment. We talked about that in a past committee of the whole on February the 6th, and there is a 42-day public review period that we need to approve, that the letter goes out to start the 42-day review of the subarea plan and the design specs for the Northland. Consent Agenda Item B is authorization to enter into an agreement with the American Red Cross to designate the Southfield Pavilion as an emergency shelter. We talked about that in our prior meeting, the first part of our meeting, in the study section of our meeting this evening, and that is, in the case of a major catastrophe, we are, the Homeland Security folks are asking us to authorize their use of the Southfield Pavilion as an emergency shelter. If you recall, we did this some time ago with Beechwood's Center designated that as an emergency shelter also. Consent Agenda Item C is to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the U.S. Army Tank Automotive Research Development and Engineering Center for a robot, a small robot, that we could use for sending into dangerous situations rather than having one of our police or fire department folks going in, or anyone else going in, and we're talking about areas where there's either a chemical hazard, a hazardous place, or explosive place, or someplace where we would rather use a robot to go in and investigate what's going on inside rather than send our police dogs in, and they're asking for approval to work in conjunction with the tank, the tank and automotive research on working, getting a robot. And our last consented agenda item is an authorization to list surplus city-owned real property for sale, and that's the old fire station on Nine Mile Road, Nine Mile and Prosper. It's not been in service since 2000, no, 1994. It was built in 1954, and it hasn't been in service since 1994, and it's been used for storage, it's been used for remote office space, but at this point in time, we're offering it for sale, and we'll pick out an agent to list it, and so we need to approve those four items on our consent agenda item, consent agenda this evening.
Mr. President?
I'd like to move approval of consent agenda items A through D.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Cruz, supported by Mr. Manalbaum, that we approve consent agenda items A, B, C, and D. Is there any further discussion?
Right here, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ficassi.
Mr. Chairman, I would like you to mention the size of that army tank, so everyone gets the impression that it's a...
Well, it's a robot. It's a small robot, probably three feet long, maybe two feet wide, and maybe a foot or so high, a remote operated, so that it's not a real tank-tank that you'd expect, that probably, and some people's like, when you say tank, they think that we'll have a 100-ton lumbering tank now through here to send into a building. No, this is a small replica of a tank, but it's a robot, can be outfitted with cameras and other devices, sensing devices, that we can put in dangerous situations and protect our first responders and from having to put themselves in extra jeopardy by going in in an area where they can't be seen, where they can't see very well. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. We have no public hearings, have no site plans, we're into the communication portion of our agenda, though we have three requests for communication. The first is Pamela Gerald, if you'd come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number's 248-346-0439. A while back, I mentioned about the fact that in the Detroit Free Press, we saw this investigation that obviously is still ongoing regarding Rizzo, the trash hauling company that this city decided to go with, severing their over 20-year relationship with waste I brought up the fact that in your Section 5 subsection H of that contract, that it says that the contractor shall not delegate or sign the agreement, or any part thereof, to an unaffiliated entity, nor shall the contractor subcontract this agreement, or any part thereof, without the prior written approval of the city, which shall not be unreasonably withheld. The contractor may not assign any part of this agreement via sale, merger, or acquisition of the contractor's company without the written approval of the city. I've also asked various members of the council, and I believe our legal representative, as to whether or not this issue is going to come back before council, or maybe one of you through the chair can answer the question, who are we doing business with? Because the trash containers still say Rizzo. On the trucks, they did what you call putting like a council banner over the word Rizzo, and now it's GFL. The trucks are not lime green, they're still red. The banner, however, is lime green, so can you just state for the record and for the residents, who we're doing business with? Are we doing business with Rizzo or GFL? And then the other thing I wanted to just say real briefly is, in the study session, you talked about the neighborhood enterprise zone, and I'm really disappointed that it appears to be somewhat favorable to start the neighborhood enterprise zone in the area where the current mayor resides. We have a section in this city over near John Grace that's the forgotten area in this city. You have not done a lot of redevelopment or anything over there in that area, other than fix up John Grace when you had a lot of issues that we got resolved together collectively. So, when will that empowerment zone include the forgotten area of this city, which is John Grace? And that's over near Eight Mile, near that Michigan Works First facility that's owned by the city. Thank you.
The next person that asks for recognition is Mr. Gerard Mullin. If you'd come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Mr. Chairman, for the last five years, I have criticized this council for publishing improper legal notices. My last criticism was on January 30th, 2017, at the last televised council meeting. Where and when? I stated that this council published a bogus legal notice for a public hearing for a site plan review that was held on January 23rd, 2017. It was bogus because there was no public hearing held that day, as advertised. Why? Why no public hearing? Because public hearings are not legally required for site plan reviews. Just as legal notices for site plan reviews are not legally required, and yet this council continues to publish these worthless notices. For example, at the bottom of page 13A of the Southfield Sun, a legal notice for a site plan review that is to take place on February 27, 2017, was published on February 9th, 2017. This is just one more example of an out-of-control spin-thrift council. It should come as no surprise that this council is not a good steward of the taxpayers' dollars, when it spends tens and tens of thousands of dollars over the last five years on these worthless bogus notices. After all, this is the same council that gave one of its favorite employees a $30,000 bonus, a top, a $30,000 a year raise. Yes, you heard me right, a $30,000 a year raise. Ask your favorite council person why they voted for this bonus and this raise. Even this is small potatoes when compared to the millions and millions of dollars given away each year by this council in the form of tax abatements. To council's favorite corporate friends, like the corporate criminal Denzel, the felon will have received 21 years of continuous welfare checks by the end of 2018. Crime does pay, and it is well rewarded in these chambers. It's time for a change. Thank you.
The third request for recognition is from Ms. Geraldine Amato. If you'd come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
This is a public comment, not a public hearing. I think Geraldine Amato is sufficient. We have, we have been under the control, despite the flag that's worshipped at the beginning of these meetings, we're under a private commercial jurisdiction. If we track who controls the government of our nation, it's the money power, what Abraham Lincoln referred to as the money power, and one of the reasons he was assassinated via ritual murder, as well as John Kennedy, who threatened the central bank by issuing silver certificates when he was in the presidential office. The assassinations of federal presidents for resisting the central banks ushered in an era of federal presidents that dare not speak against the central banks, if you've noticed, since the assassination of John Kennedy. In three minutes, I can't really elaborate on what I'd like to, but when I was in New Mexico this past year, I noted two more ritual murders of local police officers, one in Hatch, New Mexico, and one in Alamogordo, New Mexico. Since 2005, I've noticed other Albuquerque police officers who have been assassinated by ritual murder. Here in, since I've been back in November, there was an officer, Rose, I believe, at Wayne State, had all the signature of a Mason ritual murder, a fatal wound to the head, November 22nd, which has a 33 built in it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We had this current federal president, who, in the campaign circus that preceded his presidency, say that there would be a constitutional crisis if his opponent was elected. That's the first time I noticed a kind of double-blind Masonic mind game. He has already spoken about Chicago, and I'm thinking one of the things that may be down the line here is martial law in some big city like Chicago, and then the federalization or the nationalization of all local police powers, which historians have proven, paves the way for a totalitarian state, authoritarian state. So indeed, the prediction of a constitutional crisis may have been the deliberate plan when the establishment controlled by the money power put this man, this blustering billionaire, in position. He mouths off what he's been taught to mouth off, and the establishment who controlled this nation under this private commercial jurisdiction, are setting up a scenario that if the good people don't resist, it's going to wind up with a totalitarian disaster.
Thank you. Your time is up. The next item on our agenda is the council portion, and we need to approve the travel expense for Mr. Ficassi.
Support. I support your approval, Mr. Ficassi.
It's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approve the travel expense report for Mr. Ficassi for the Detroit Economic Club. Is there any discussion? Are we prepared to discuss, to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried.
Mr. President, ever seen on this item?
I'll let the record show that there were five yeas, one abstention. Next item on our, is there anything else on the council? Mr. Brightwell.
Mr. Chair, and also to the citizen in the city of Southfield, since I was elected, I've been a strong supporter of our public safety departments, and I sort of stressed that, since I've been on council, I pretty much stressed the importance, the importance of having employees who are in our public safety, and also making sure that we moved forward with respect to the union contracts. And I'd just like to announce that, I hope I'm not still in the thunder from anyone else's report, but we're in the process now of hiring 11 new firefighters, and the notice went out, and that was a direct result of pushing to get our union contracts resolved, and now that we have those resolved, we can move forward with other items in the city that need to be addressed. So I'm just extremely happy that, and that we are now in the process of restaffing our public safety departments. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Chairman?
Mr. Ficassi.
I'd just like to take the opportunity to tell those that have dogs, animals, that people who walk around the blocks on the sidewalk are afraid of those animals that can come right up to the sidewalk when you have an invisible fence, and those that are leashed to the front of the house, that people are afraid to go in front of them because they're barking and they assume they're vicious. But it's getting nice weather now, it's getting up in the 50s, thank goodness, and people are starting to walk around the block, and there are rules that they cannot go up to the sidewalk, meaning the animals, and if you do have a situation, you can call our code enforcement officers.
Anyone else? Mr. Manalbaum.
I just want to remind everyone, or tell you for the first time, that this Sunday, February 19th, from 2:00 to 4:30, we are having our Winter Fest. Here in the pavilion, there will be games, free ice skating, marshmallow roasting, horse-drawn carriage rides. We are kind of hoping for some snow. I know most people don't want it, but some of the activities would be better with snow, so hopefully we'll have a little bit, not a lot, just a little, and that's this coming Sunday, February 19th, from 2:00 to 4:30 here at the pavilion. Thank you very much.
Anything else? I'd just like to say tomorrow is Valentine's Day, so anybody that's watching the program tonight that hasn't thought about what to get their sweetie for Valentine's Day, if you're paying attention to the program, your excuse just ran out. And in fact, I just reminded myself. Anything else? Moving into the next item on our agenda, Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, council and audience. There are a couple things, announcements. First of all, we had some very good news last week. Southfield was reported in the Detroit News, as well as on NPR and Michigan Radio, that by a report that came out from the Partnership for a New Economy, which is a nationwide group of mayors and businesspeople who tout the benefits of immigration, and researchers looked at 10 U.S. cities that have accepted the largest number of refugees over the past 10 years relative to their populations. And I'll quote, "The Detroit suburb of Southfield is number six on that list. It was a destination for 4,478 refugees from 2006 to 2015, mostly from Iraq. During that time, Southfield's violent crime rate, based on FBI statistics, plummeted more than 77 percent. Property crime also dropped 46 percent during that time." And the reason that this report is telling, obviously, is, without getting political, but the whole immigration situation that was part of the presidential campaign and the recent ban that's been halted by the courts about seven countries in the Middle East, and it is significant that we've seen an increase in immigrants coming from the Middle East, and yet, at the same time, the immigrants that have come here would not be involved in crime, and as some people want to portray, that immigrants are dangerous. So I thought that was very newsworthy, and bears repeating if you didn't hear it last week. Also, for those who will remember that last year, and this is just the first notice, April is Autism Awareness Month, and on April 1st, we ask people to light up blue. So I'll ask Mr., our deputy super, or deputy city administrator, Mr. Rena, to see if we can't get blue lights on City Hall again. And my final announcement is that March is on the way, and we will be doing the annual State of the City address on March 20th. The first, it'll be done twice, the first one is sponsored by the Southfield Chamber of Commerce, and it will be held at the newly renovated Best Western Premier Hotel on Telegraph, which, this will sort of serve as their grand opening. The luncheon is 35, wait a minute, 45, rather, $45 for chamber members and 55 for others. But you don't have to go to the luncheon to hear the State of the City address. Once again, it will be broadcast over city cable, but also, we will offer the State of the City address on the Thursday following, that's the 23rd of March, at 7:00 PM in council chambers. So there'll be two opportunities to see it live, and then again, it'll be broadcast repeatedly on city cable. That concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you very much. Mr. Administrator, do you have anything this evening?
I have no items this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney, you have three items on your...
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have three ordinance amendments, each of which were discussed in the earlier portion of our meeting this evening. The first ordinance consists of the revisions to the retiree healthcare benefits plan and trust, ordinance specifically to adopt and include the changes that council had approved regarding eligibility for retire, post-retirement health benefits, as well as the premium sharing that retirees would make once they have retired toward their healthcare. On that one, we are asking that that be not only introduced, but enacted this evening as well as an emergency ordinance, and then we'll get that published as soon as we can, and it would be in effect then.
I need to have a motion to introduce and enact this ordinance, ordinance number 1552...
No, there would be a new ordinance number to it. So we'll need that...
1552 will be modified...
Correct.
...to include the new terms that were negotiated.
Correct.
But we need to introduce and enact it as an emergency ordinance this evening.
So...
Support.
It's been moved by Ms. Seymour, supported by Mr. Manalbaum, that we introduce and enact...
Mr. President, could we do it in the dual form that we normally do, where we approve the ordinance, then we get an ordinance number, and then we will introduce and enact that ordinance number?
You just want to drag this meeting out.
I'm sorry.
I was going to set, go, try to set a record. We need to approve the ordinance, the changes in the ordinance.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we move the changes in ordinance number 1552.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Manalbaum, that we approve the changes in ordinance number 1552. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now we need a new ordinance number.
Ordinance 1670.
Pardon me?
1670.
1670. Now I need to introduce and enact ordinance number 1670.
So move.
Support.
It's been moved by Ms. Seymour, supported by Mr. Manalbaum, that we enact, that we introduce and enact ordinance number 1670 as an emergency order. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Okay, you're on your second.
The second ordinance is a proposed amendment to Chapter 100, which up till now has been titled "The Housing Code." Again, this was discussed earlier this evening, and two changes would be made to Chapter 100. It would now be titled "The Property Maintenance Code," in lieu of "The Housing Code," and there would be a new Section 8.144, which would be added to require inspections prior to sale of facilities that have been granted a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone certificate.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we approve the amendments to Chapter 100 of the Housing Code.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Manalbaum, that we approve the proposed amendments to Chapter 100 of the Housing Code and rename it.
Correct.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We need a new one for that, too?
Correct.
But we're only going, you know what, this is an emergency.
No, just to introduce is...
Okay.
Ordinance 1671.
Okay, I need... Okay, I need to introduce...
Let's move, Mr. Chairman.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Ficassi, and supported by Mr. Cruz, that we introduce ordinance number 1671, the Housing Code. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried.
The third ordinance amendment is with respect to Chapter 104, the vacant property registration, again, discussed earlier tonight. In essence, there will be modifications in terms of the process and the timing for a property to be registered under the ordinance, and again, these come about as a result of kind of working with the ordinance the last few years, and trying to make it more efficient in terms of processing registrations.
Mr. President, I move that we support the proposed ordinance amendment for Chapter 104, the vacant property registration.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Cruz, supported by Ms. Seymour, that we approve the amendments to Chapter 104, the vacant property registration. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. I need to introduce...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move the introduction of ordinance number 1672.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Ficassi, that we introduce ordinance number 1672, and is supported by Mr. Cruz. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Is there anything else on your agenda this evening, Madam Attorney?
No, I have nothing further. Thank you, Mr. President.
I have nothing in the clerk, treasurer, planner, assessor, or the engineer portion of the agenda. There seems to be nothing to schedule, and we have no ordinances to enact, and my fellow council people, that sounds like the end of the meeting to me.
Support.
All those, if there is no more new business to come before the council, the meeting is adjourned.